Good evening. I'd like to call the regular board meeting of the Waterloo Community School District to order this evening. Please join me in a moment of silence. And now will you please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And now Rhonda will read our mission statement this evening.
The Waterloo Community Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thanks, Rhonda. Now we have a nice board celebration to recognize this evening. I'm going to go ahead and get the motion on the table while Tara comes up. And that motion is that the board express its appreciation to all the employees, bus drivers, food service personnel, volunteers, parents, students, and friends of the Waterloo Community Schools for the role each person plays in education, and take this opportunity to recognize education support professionals and support and substitute teachers in particular for their valuable contributions to great public schools. The board officially designates November 16th through 20th, 2015, as American Education Week in the Waterloo Community School District.
Thank you, Shanley.
Can I get that? Hang on, just a quick second, Tara. So moved in a second?
Second.
Great. Now we're ready.
Thank you very much. So we just want to acknowledge that this is the designated week for American Education Week, and it is a time that we want to recognize that our public schools would not function without all of the integral relationships between teachers, students, and parents. And the National Education Association's designated week is, of course, spotlighting this importance to provide each and every child in America with quality public education and that important role that it plays in our country and its future. So as part of honoring the designation, all of our electronic sign boards across the district will be sharing this message. And then the members of the board, yourselves, as well as some district administrators, will participate in the Iowa School Board Association Conference and the Urban Education Network Fall Meetings that are traditionally held around this time.
Great. Thanks, Tara. Anybody want to say anything about that?
While they're thinking, would you mind if I would? I just was, I was really curious to know the history and the background behind the National Education Week. So I looked it up because that's kind of, I like that. So here's an interesting, here's some interesting facts. So the National Education Association, the NEA, and then also the American Legion actually initiated the Educators Week. And they did it, and here's just a comment. It says, distressed that 25% of the country's World War I draftees were illiterate and that 9% were physically unfit, representatives of the NEA and the American Legion joined forces and met in 1919 to seek ways to generate public support for education. And that really was the origination, the origination of this whole week. So I thought that was really cool. And then it said, in 1921, the NEA Representative Assembly met in Des Moines and called for a designation of one week each year. So that was in 1921. And then it said, an education week observed in all communities annually for the purpose of informing the public of the accomplishments and the needs of public schools and to secure the cooperation and support of the public in meeting those needs. And their slogan this year is something important happens here, something unique, something powerful, something precious. I just couldn't have said it any better than that. I just was kind of curious about that. And each day of the week is designated to somebody, to a group, with Monday being the overall, but Tuesday is actually dedicated to parents by the NEA, if you look on the website. And then Friday is our substitute teachers. And so I just thought that was kind of a neat, a neat history.
Great. Thank you for sharing. Thank you for sharing that, Jane.
And thank you, Tara, for this. It is important that we recognize, all of us, the phrase, "It takes a village," or whatever phrase you'd like to choose. Definitely educating our students is a, is a group effort. Let's put it that way. So does anybody have anything further?
I just would say, as a product of Waterloo Schools and some of the amazing teachers that are still in the system that I had as teachers who inspired me to get a degree in education, even though I'm not teaching, have been amazing. And I mentioned them when my 20 under 40. So like Mr. Burns, Mr. Roberson, who I believe is retired, Mr. Vanis, those are great, all guys, but great administrators or teachers that inspired me to do better than what I was in their classroom because they saw something in me. And so that's why I sit here today as part of their push, and I appreciate it, and just wanted to say that out loud in case they are watching.
Thanks, Angela.
And I also wanted to echo that. I think it's pretty cool that they added, included bus drivers and the lunch personnel because I know a lunch person at West High, Connie, was so instrumental in all my kids going through the luncheon at West High. And the bus drivers, I think they're just really important because they can make or break a kid's day. So I'm really glad that they were included as part of our team because that's definitely, they're a real integral part of our team.
I'm so glad you mentioned Connie. I just had to say that because we are trying to spotlight employees in different groups that are so integral to the district, there's a feature that we've done on Connie that's on YouTube, and it's the most viewed video of the entire school year by far. She had over 5,000 hits in 48 hours. And that video is accessible to anyone if you just go to the Waterloo Schools YouTube site. And Connie is one of many employees in those groups that we'd like to continue to feature. Unfortunately, a lot of them are so humble that they're camera shy. So we just have to talk them into going on camera so we can share their stories, so.
That's great, Tara. Thanks. Well, with that, all those in favor that are approving the recommendation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. The next item on our agenda is information from individuals and delegations. And this is the opportunity where those of you who wish to address the school board may do so. I ask that you please keep your comments to three minutes or less, and Mrs. Arndorfer will hold up a yellow card when you have 30 seconds remaining and a red card when your time has expired. At that time, I will ask you to conclude your public comments. Please keep your comments respectful and constructive. We are all here with the goal of trying to help our students. And please also avoid criticizing the job performance of specific employees of the school district. Personnel matters are confidential and must be handled through proper channels and not in a public forum. And finally, we'll provide this, we do provide this as an opportunity for public comment, but it is generally not a back and forth discussion, especially items that are not on our agenda. At times, we will try to help if we can with information before or after the meeting, but we have to proceed with our board meeting agenda items. And with that, I now invite anyone who wishes to address the board to come forward and state your name and address. No, I knew they were coming. I already talked to them.
Is this on?
Is the green light on?
Yes.
Then it's on. Good to go, you two.
Maybe pull it down. There you go.
There you go.
Grace Rather, 3106 Grand Boulevard.
Laura McInerney, 417 Westfith Street, Cedar Falls.
All right. And we're from Food Corps. We were here last month and, sorry, I forgot about the mic. And we will be back in the next month or so. I'll respond to that email and have a good time for when we can come back for a longer presentation. But because of the late notice that we had for the board, we only have a few minutes. So we're just going to briefly go over what we did in October. October was Farm to School Month. And so one of our biggest projects was we picked 1,100 apples for the Waterloo Schools. We were with seven elementary schools, and we have a nutrition program called Pick a Better Snack. And each child got two to three slices of local Fuji apples. We went to Winthrop to pick the apples. Laura and I did it ourselves along with a couple other AmeriCorps service members. So it was a good project for community involvement, and it got fresh local produce to kids at Waterloo. So that was our most exciting project that we had in October. But we also did some programs with Boys and Girls Club and YWCA and Garden Club at Cunningham. So that they learned more about where their food comes from and how to make healthy snacks. And Laura will talk about what she did for National School Lunch Week at her schools and some things we've been doing with Green Thumb Club at Carver.
So the three schools that I've been focusing my work and service at have been Kitchell, Becker, and Irving. And at those three schools, National School Lunch Week was, I believe, three weeks ago. And as like a celebration of the cafeteria workers at those three schools, we made displays and put them in the cafeteria celebrating our lunchroom superheroes. So we made kind of superhero displays for all of the cafeteria and janitorial staff at the three schools, and then had kids come up and recognize the work that the cafeteria staff do. And then, as Grace mentioned, one of our after-school programs is Green Thumb, which is at George Washington Carver Academy. And we're there two days out of the week, helping them with gardening, learning food skills and cooking skills. And actually, we're going to be wrapping up work with that club just before the holidays next week. And we're on Thursday going to be having a Thanksgiving feast celebration. And on behalf of the students, the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders there, we wanted to extend invitations to the board to attend the Thanksgiving feast. So I can pass around, I printed out 12, I hope that's enough. But that'll be happening next Thursday at 3:15 at George Washington Carver. If you had anything else to say? That's it? Thank you.
Thank you both. And I did come out, I just want our audience to know at home that we really appreciate what Food Corps does, and being in our buildings, we're very thankful for that. And we do look forward to them giving us a little bit more of a presentation, a little bit longer presentation where we can engage a little bit more with you in the future. So we will look forward to getting that scheduled. Do your hands hurt from picking all those apples?
Could you move your dinner to Friday? No, on Thursday, we're all in Des Moines for the Iowa School Boards Convention until 5 o'clock on Thursday. I would love to come, but...
And we have to do a presentation. We can't skip it, so.
But please keep us posted. It sounds like you guys are doing an awesome job, and I appreciate your work, and I wish my son could come to some of your classes.
Thanks, you both. Anyone further? Then seeing no one, we will move on with our consent agenda this evening. It consists of the following items: the minutes of the October 26th, 2015 Regular Board Meeting, personnel appointments and adjustments, bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings, the West High School Government Class Trip to Washington, D.C., Food Service Department Equipment Bid for Lincoln, Kitchell, and Pointer. Are there any items which board members would like to see removed?
E and F.
E and F. Great. Anything else? Great. So all those in favor, I do need to get the motion on the table for items B, C, and D of the consent agenda? Thank you. All those in favor then of approving items B, C, and D, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. That takes us then to item E on page 16. And I know we have Mr. Youska here in the audience, who I'm sure can come answer some questions for us. But the recommended motion is the Board of Education approve travel for West High students and Mr. Youska to Washington, D.C. February 21st through the 26th of 2016. Can I get that motion on the table?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Great. Without further ado, Mr. Youska.
Well, I'm here once again. Tom Youska from West High School, and here to ask for approval to take students out of the state and do everything legal, of course. Trying to get it done and get things finalized so we can start the business rolling. Columbus will have 15 this year. We travel with Columbus and Cedar Rapids Jefferson. Not sure how many Jefferson has this year. I haven't contacted them. On one of the pages, it has the schedule, and the group that I work with is a nonprofit group called Close Up. The travel agencies all over the world are trying to get high school kids to travel all over, and they're great trips. But one of the nice things about Close Up, it started way back in 1971 with Alan J. Lender, who was a senator for 36 years and was all about kids. He was one of the ones that got the school lunch programs and free and reduced lunch things. Started that as a U.S. Senator. Left a good portion of his estate to Close Up, to actually to the United States government to form a trust type of organization. And as I've said before, somehow they managed to not blow all the money and lose it all, and they're still operating all these years since 1971. And they do things in a very first-class way and at the same time don't gouge the kids and parents on the cost. We stay at very nice, safe hotels. We have a full day planned. If you look at the schedule, and actually I fill it in, and even fuller than what the schedule is. If you look on Sunday, I don't have it written down, but we're leaving West High, we want to leave at 2:30 and get there early. That way, we can get there by 1:15 and be to Arlington and everything and deal with flight issues. That night, the kids will be pretty tired, but they have the very famous conservative liberal debate, which Close Up brings in two very controversial people from somewhere in Washington. And as I've said before, they almost get to a fistfight. And the kids get to comment and question these two and agree with them and disagree with them. And then the next two or three days are pretty much on the run. And sometimes they schedule sessions afternoon when the kids are a little tired for a little sit-down for about 40 minutes with the Department of Ag. They work that out very well, the schedule. But seeing a lot of the sites and the memorials and monuments, and every night, there is something going on at the hotel. We have a mock congress one night. We have the liberal debate. And they have a current issues policy activity that's very popular with the kids. And Wednesday is Capitol Hill Day, and a busy, long day. If I'm clever enough here in the next few weeks, I'll get everything arranged as far as visits to our senators and representatives' offices, get a tour arranged to the Capitol. And then we also visit the Holocaust Museum that afternoon. And then that night, I still don't know which one, but there's a brand-new theater in addition to Kennedy Center. Last year, we were at the new theater, not the Kennedy Center. And so we'll have a theater night because when you're in the city, the big city, you should go to the theater. And then usually, the Columbus teacher and I, Mark BG, try to figure out what the kids want to do on Thursdays and Fridays. And we don't fly out until the very last flight, 7:30 on Friday, which is kind of nice because, believe it or not, we streamline the ride home, and we're home by 11:30 to Cedar Rapids Airport. But those are days we kind of pick up and do like a tour of Georgetown, Ford's Theater, anything the kids haven't seen, Pentagon City Mall, they like to go to that one, and any of the other historical sites. And I've been doing this long enough now that I'm starting to find monuments and things that are kind of obscure, and so now I'm kind of working those into the trip too. So, anyway. The cost did not go up this year. The only thing that went up was the plane ticket. It went up $35. And so that, the plane ticket round trip was $463. So that was actually a pretty good deal. Close Up does a good job of keeping the cost down from year to year. And we actually milked an extra day and a half out by flying out so early in the morning and coming home so late. So I kind of work all angles on that. So, do you have questions?
One of my questions was, in your initial letter to Mr. Shavers, you said eight students were going, and then in his letter, it said 15 students from West.
That's because when I applied for permission on the website for the Waterloo Schools, on the school net, it won't let you, at that time, I only had eight kids that were probably for sure. Well, it's gone up, and so I changed it. And when I called Ms. Miller the other day with the information and brought it down to her, I said, "It's actually different than what the original letter was."
Okay.
So it might be about 13 to 15, so.
Okay.
And when you, when you sign up on the net, I wanted to go 10 to 15, but the computer net won't let you do that. It won't let you, it has to have a number.
And can kids still go or not?
Sure. I actually got two right on the edge right now who are going to let me know in the next day or two. And then we're probably done, so.
And I saw on here that Mr. Shavers said that school board members should go too. I think that we should too.
Yeah, seriously.
Well, Close Up, believe it or not, has a program, I think it's like winning the lottery, where occasionally an administrator or school board members are invited and paid for for free. Dr. Victoria Robinson, who used to be at NU High, she went as a guest administrator one year when I went. That was back when NU High, so a while back. But Close Up does that every once in a while to promote it so that administrators, you know, will back it. School board members, of course, too.
Thank you very much because I have talked to lots of kids that have gone. I know Shanley's boy did. And it's just a wonderful experience and gets kids that history that they don't often see, especially with a tour guide like you that knows. So I think that's really good.
What's really neat is the kids come back very excited about making a difference like Close Up says, and they're more politically active. And I've shared with you in the past, I have students that work out there now in Washington, D.C., or run for elected office, not president or anything like that, but like lesser elected offices. But I do have one former student who works for the Department of Ag, and a lot of the kids are coming home and saying they want to do an internship in some department out there. The thing they're shocked about when we get out there is that Washington, D.C. is run by a very young group of people. You know, all the senators and representatives are the ones that are old, but most of the staffers in all the offices, they're always very shocked. They always remark to me that, "God, it's actually kind of a lot of young people," right? It is, so.
And I blame you. It's all your fault that, maybe not all your fault, but you truthfully, and this program instilled in my son, who did get to go three years ago now, I mean, a true love of public service. Close Up does an excellent job. I think the fact that they get to really get inside and then you do some of that mock debate and all that stuff, he still talks about this trip. So thank you for instilling that in him and the rest of the students that get to go. So he wanted to go again. That's how much he liked it.
Well, I know. I've actually had families who have sent two or three, I think Mr. Ubolodi from West has sent three daughters now, so.
Yeah.
And he has another one to go, yes.
He's got one more, exactly.
I think, I think they're planning next year possibly, so. But yeah, the kids come home with a whole different feeling of it and the whole thing, so. But it's fun for me. Everybody says, "Don't you get bored?" No. I learn something new every year, and I get a big charge out of the kids having a good time and learning and stuff, so. I've been doing it for 18 years, so.
Mr. Youska, I have just a question. You said you've scheduled for 15, and you have about 13 who are interested. So would that be possibly open to maybe an East High student to be able to attend?
I could take.
Thinking of Mr. Dale's, like, speech and debate team, that would be a perfect fit.
Well, I've been asked this before by the board, and I would be willing to help East High go. I would probably feel better if one of their staffers would go with us because I wouldn't know the students very well, you know. But yeah, like, Mr. Dale would be an excellent person to do that, so.
Well, this event is in February, so I believe that we need to get on in and figure out how we can get some East High students on this trip. So, you know, we need to do whatever it takes to make that happen. I also noticed this year for the Close Up program, they have controversial topics, and this, this month or this year's controversial topic is racial profiling and criminal justice, which is a big topic of conversation in our nation. And I would really think it would be beneficial for students or representatives from all of the Waterloo Schools to be accompanied there. If there is a cost with this trip and there's a funding issue, please let me know. I would be willing to sponsor a student if that's, if that's the issue.
There is a cost, so, you know.
Okay. And do you know what the cost per student is, sir?
$1,767.
Okay. As I said, Angie and I would be willing to...
That's the student cost, so.
And I understand that, so whatever we need to do to make that happen.
If students would go from East, or like anything else, like I think when I answered that question one other year or two or three years ago, I would feel better if a staffer from East would go.
Yeah. That makes sense.
And that would be a cost there too, so.
Sure. Well, we have a couple months.
Well, actually, a little less than that. I was trying to finalize deadlines and money and stuff now, so. If it's something that couldn't happen this year, it could definitely happen next year.
I think it can happen this year.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Youska. Appreciate it. Great. Then all those in favor of approving the West High School Government Class Trip to Washington, D.C., please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. Then that takes us to item F on page 20. And the recommended motion is the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the evaluation committee and approve the contract for equipment as presented at the board meeting.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Well, I just was very appreciative that we got two bids on this and that they were very competitive bids. And I went through, you know, kind of line by line, and I just, I just thought that both Wilson and Martin had very good bids, and I just wanted to thank them both for bidding. And maybe the next time, we will award the bid, you know, to the other bidder. But I just, I appreciate having two very competitive bids for this project.
And I'd like to note that both of them are here local, so that's great for us, too. I think that they're companies that we've had experience dealing with and trust, and that's a good thing, so. So anything further on that? Great. Then all those in favor of approving the Food Service Department Equipment Bids for Lincoln, Kitchell, and Pointer, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. That takes us to the next item on our agenda, which is item G on page 25. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the form of petition language for circulation. The board intends to accept the signed petitions at the December 14th, 2015 meeting. Can I get that on the table?
So moved.
And a second? Thank you. And just as a little background, for those of you who may not have been intently watching us on, on the 26th of October, the board approved, unanimously approved, three recommendations from the High School Reform Task Force. And those were to implement 30 career and technical education programs in phases over the next three years, to, secondly, build a standalone facility to house these career and technical education programs at a property near Central Middle School, and, lastly, to initiate... and, lastly, to initiate needed building improvements at East and West High Schools and prioritize other funds, SAVE and PEPL, for example, to continue renovation at all three schools. And after that, we then dictated the superintendent, Dr. Lindeman, and the administration to work with our bond counsel to develop proposed petition language, which we are bringing forward this evening. After, we do anticipate that this language will be accepted for a bond vote going forward, perhaps as early as February. But we will make that determination once we approve that at our final meeting in, of the year in December, when the petitions are actually returned to us. So with that, I am going to read the language of the petition, so that we get that out there. And it is, "That shall the Board of Directors of the Waterloo Community School District in the County of Blackhawk, State of Iowa, be authorized to contract indebtedness and issue general obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed $47 million to provide funds to construct, build, improve, furnish, and equip a new career and technical education center, and to improve this site, and to remodel, repair, improve, furnish, and equip the East and West High School buildings, including, but not limited to, installation of air conditioning systems, lighting and electrical improvements, window replacement, tuck pointing, and masonry veneer improvements, and to improve those sites." So that's the petition language that we are accepting tonight. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Lindeman, and I also know that Crystal Buzza is here this evening. If those of us on the board have any further questions.
Sure. Just a couple comments about this. I think one of the things, the, the process is kind of set on how you, you proceed with these kind of things. And so we are sticking with the timelines that are provided to us, legal guidance. And the other piece, I think, that is interesting is that we had done a, a survey recently to kind of dipstick and probe to find out the, the amount of support. That has been a continued, a continued effort from us and from the committee. We have done things like focus groups. We have had town hall meetings. Matter of fact, I believe, all total, you know, 21 or something like that over the last couple of years. We, our committee members have gone out and have sought feedback from two, three people each, and we brought that back and we charted it. But most recently, we did a random survey that was done to 400 randomly chosen community members. And it was a phone survey, but we actually have included in this document some of the results and the, the, the support that we found from this committee. And it was really, I'm sorry, not from the committee, from this, the survey. And so some of the things that I thought were really important to, to highlight, again, it was 400 people. But right now, if, without a whole lot of, you know, a promotional campaign to really inform people of the, the public about this, it was really over 61% of the people would support it right now. And so that was really helpful for us to know. Excuse me. We believed all along, we had, we had done our due diligence to make sure that we were finding the, the initiative or the proposal that was the best for students and moved us the farthest in technical education, but was really supported by our community. And so this was just one more piece that we wanted to add, and so that is in your proposal tonight. We, today, and I, if you don't mind, I'll go ahead and share. Today, we had the opportunity to go out to all of the buildings, 19 buildings within the Waterloo Schools, and talk with staff. And we, we got really excellent questions and things that will help us guide, you know, general public, but also work with our, our staff to make sure that everybody is very understanding of the proposal at hand. That was a, a great opportunity. It was, it was quite a busy day, but that's, you know, they're, they're all busy. But it was a, a really great opportunity to connect with, you know, 12 to 1300 staff members, and we have, probably almost 1,400 staff members. And then we have another opportunity to connect with the bus drivers, and we'll just kind of stay at it. We really want to make sure that, that all public, all stakeholders are aware of this. So I just wanted to mention that, that survey.
Great. Anything further for Dr. Lindeman or anybody?
Well, I think the results of the survey are encouraging. Again, it shows, like you had said, that we did discuss this with parents, community members, businesses. And I think we've gotten the best options brought forward in, in career technical education. And I believe that the public will, will back this proposal.
I think we have, we also have an excellent opportunity in collecting signatures to make another outreach with our community, because we're going to be asking for, you know, 400 to 500 signatures. And that's another time in which we can converse with people and talk about what we're doing. And obviously, this just gets the petition on the ballot. It's not asking people to pick one way or the other, but it, it definitely gets it out there, too, which I think is important, so. Anything further?
Well, and you just mentioned the signatures, so what, I guess, explain that process to our viewers, like, how many signatures are needed and what that does?
Yeah, right. That, that process is really regulated by legal guidelines. And so what we would need to, to bring to the, the school board, or what would be needed, would be 25% of the number of people who voted in the last special election. So for us, that, I believe that's around 280 to 300 signatures. And so that would be, what, that is what the process requires, 25% of the number of people that voted in the last election, so. And then that, those signatures would come before you. And, and in essence, that is a signal that the voters are saying, "Please put this on the ballot and allow us to, to have a voice at the table."
And then we'll accept those and then move forward with the timeline in the future. Okay. Right. Does that make sense? Great. With that, I would like to ask for a roll call vote tonight, just because this is important. And I just want to make sure that we all are heard. So I'm going to start with Jessie. Are you in favor?
I, I agree.
Angela?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And Chair Shanley, yes. With that, the motion carried. Thank you all very much. Appreciate that. Well, that concludes our action items for this evening. We'll move on then to our superintendent's report with Dr. Lindeman.
Right, absolutely. I think the, I just have just a couple items, but I would tell you that the bulk of my schedule these days is the high school reform movement, the conversation, information, working with various constituents. One of the things that we have spent a lot of time, and I, I have to acknowledge Crystal Buzza, because we're kind of joined at the hip right at the moment, because we, we are attending a lot of the same meetings and talking with a lot of the same people. We, not, in addition to meeting with all of the staff to share the message and to get their input and to get their questions, which that'll be a continuous process, we're also meeting with businesses. You know, we have another one tomorrow. We're just, we're working, we're starting with some of the bigger employers. And, but, but really branching out to a variety of businesses and asking them the question, you know, sharing the message, asking them, you know, "Does this make sense? What part of it connects with you? What part of it resonates? How could we partner?" We actually take kind of a continuum of, of support opportunities. And I will tell you, it has been so encouraging to talk with our businesses in Cedar Valley. They have, they have reached out. They're very affirmative, saying that they really are excited to work with the schools. And I just couldn't ask for any more from our businesses. I think that's fantastic. Another thing we're doing is, is sharing the message within the community, mostly just the proposal itself. It is very important for us that people understand the proposal and what it is. There has been a spirit of transparency all throughout this. I've mentioned before, it's been three and a half years that we've been working on this. And I just think that that is, it's a long time, and we've tried to be transparent all along. But right now, that's even called for even more, because the proposal came forward with the recommendations. And so at that point, I just, most of my day is spent with the high school reform, but there's, you know, a lot of amazing things going on. So on, on a separate note, I think it is amazing to think that the winter sports season kind of kicked off today. I think that's almost hard to believe. There's no snow out there yet. Sorry. I know you're not supposed to say that word, but winter sports season kicked off today. And I, and I think another thing, you know, another signal is that next week is the last full week in the, in the first trimester of school. So that means we are in our 11th week right now, 12 weeks next, next week. And I just think that's, you know, it's just significantly hard to believe that the, the year goes that fast. I mentioned it the last time we had a board meeting, because I wanted people to get it on their calendar, but the STEM Festival is this Thursday, and it is such an amazing event. And so I would suggest that every single person in the audience, every single person who hears this message, if you drive by schools, you can notice that they have little signs out in front. I was over at East High today, and they have a little sign out in front of their building reminding parents as they drop off their children and, and pick them up, that, that is on Thursday, this Thursday, at the Sullivan, Five Sullivan Brothers, and it is from 4 o'clock to 7:30. If you have not gone, you must go. It is, it is amazing. It's a great opportunity for kids. Grab your kids. They will, of any age, you just will get.
You'll never leave.
You, it isn't, I drag my kids out of there every single year, and we are, we are there first, and we are probably the last ones to go. So I just want to make sure that people do not miss that opportunity. And finally, just, I know we already celebrated National Education Week, but I just, I, I think all of us sitting up here and, and everybody in the audience believes so much in the power of educators. I do not care whether you are a teacher or a principal or a parent educator or a bus driver. Regardless of what you do, you do it for kids. And I, I, I think that is just, that's an amazing thing. So I applaud every single educator here, every single educator that's listening, every single educator in Waterloo Schools and honestly, across the nation. I just think it's the most admirable, admirable profession that we could have chosen. So, and it's a privilege to work with our kids. And that concludes my comments tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Lindeman. You probably don't have much voice left after all that speaking.
No, it's been a long day. I'm, I'm, yes, it's been a long day, but a really good one.
Good one, exciting, so. Great. Well, now it's time, then, for information from board members. And I'm going to start over here to my right with Mike Kinsey.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Rhonda?
Nothing.
Thank you. Nothing at this time.
Great, thanks. Sue?
Well, I just, first of all, wanted to thank all parents that attended conferences. That's such an important connection with your teacher. And if you didn't make it this time, we'll have conferences again in February, March, right in that area. And it, it really is a good way to get to know your kid's teacher and to just find out what's going on in the school. And, and it also shows your kid that you care. So I would encourage that when we go again, but thank you for those who did attend. And then also, an upcoming event that I thought I would just kind of put a plug in for, the Volunteer Center of the Cedar Valley is having on Saturday, November 21st. It's called Family Volunteer Service Day. And I have participated in this in the past, a few years ago, but it's on Saturday, November 21st, from 9:00 AM to 11:30 AM. And it's at 220 East Fourth Street. And if you don't get all these details, I'm sure you can call Pam or the district office. But, and it's projects for all kids that are going to help the community. They're going to be putting together literacy kits for students to use. And they're also going to be making fleece scarves, seasonal crafts, bird feeders, cat toys, and placemats. So kids of all ages are going to be able to participate in that. And I just think it's a really, it'd be cool to have a real representation of our district employees and students there. And it's just a good time and a good, in the holiday season, to show that we care about others in our community and we support them through our time and efforts, so.
May I add to that, please? The deadline for a lot of college applications is coming up soon. And as part of the portfolio, a lot of colleges and universities want to see that their students have experiential learning or volunteer hours. We don't get too many opportunities for volunteer hours within, within our district. So for you college seniors, excuse me, high school seniors, upcoming college freshmen, please consider attending this to help supplement your resume and your college applications. So again, colleges are looking for volunteer experience, and this would count for those service learning hours. So I strongly encourage parents to encourage your sons and daughters to attend.
Yeah, good idea. Great. Angela?
I was feeling guilty for listening, listing teachers, and I forgot Ms. Boston and Ms. Kellerher. And Ms. Kellerher, I will never forget how, when Teen Wolf was out and kids, kids were teasing me, because I have hairy arms, that you showed the whole classroom your arms and made me feel like I was special. So I just wanted to add that to teachers who have made it amazing.
You're not a Teen Wolf. No. That's awesome. Okay. That's maybe for later. We'll see the Teen Wolf out, so. All right, Jessie.
I guess two for this week. One, just thank you to the staff over at Hoover Middle School. They had a, their assistant seventh grade dance last Friday night. So it was very well attended. Got to stop over a while and just kind of watch and observe. And just nice to you. We give a safe, fun atmosphere for the kids and on amazing costumes. Zombies seem to be very popular right now.
Not Teen Wolf.
But thank you to the staff there for the hours they gave up to do that, so. Secondly, I'll echo the Cedar Valley STEM Festival. You know, my employer's a big supporter of that as well, and it's, I think it's a great deal. But kind of coming behind that as well here, in February, we have Engineering Week coming up, which John Deere sends out a lot of the people into the very communities. And now we're actually, they've been pushing out into the, you know, the counties probably within hour here. And so my push has always been to make sure we take care of our community first. But quite honestly, a lot of schools don't take advantage of it. It's a free opportunity to bring engineers in to discuss that. Central Middle School have been the biggest user about, Mr. Harris over there does a great job. They usually line up anywhere around 15, 15 to 20 class visits. And so, but last year is the first year we got back into Hoover after a few years out. And not, I think we had one class at Bunker in recent years, I remember. So a lot of opportunity there to, you know, bring those kids some free exposure and, I guess, volunteers in, even at East and West, too. They used to have some people come in there, but I don't think those classes have been nearest requested as they had in the past. So it might help curtail us into some of our CTU stuff as well, so.
That's great. Thanks, Jessie. I just have a few things tonight. Speaking of staying on the Hoover topic, I wanted to let the public know that Hoover is having a Veterans Day Assembly with music and to honor our veterans on Wednesday. And that program is at 9:30 in the morning for the general public. They're also doing one for the school at 1:30. But if you have a chance to attend, it's a really nice, it's a very moving and very, obviously, patriotic assembly. So if you have a chance and you're interested in hearing some great music, you can look forward to attending that. And I also just wanted to echo what Dr. Lindeman said about American Education Week and how thankful we all are for our staff and our teachers and our paras and our bus drivers and never underestimating the power that one person has to change a child's life. So very grateful for all of you that are here in our district. And also want to say thanks for the opportunity that all of us are going to have next week to attend the Iowa School Board Convention. It is really a great opportunity for all of us. I always learn something when I'm down there. I've been on the board seven years, and every time I go, I feel like Mr. Yuska. I learn something new. I sit in on a new session. I learn something more about school finance. And so that opportunity for all of us to do that is really important, and I'm, I'm very grateful for that. I don't believe that there's anything further, but I do want to say that our next board meeting, then, will be on November the 23rd, right back here in this room, at 6:00 PM. And at 6:00? Yeah. And so I was just going to say, with nothing further, I entertain a motion to adjourn, but we've got one more thing.
Well, because we won't be meeting until after November 11th, which is Veterans Day, I want to give a special shout out to all of our Waterloo educators who have served in the military. So I just want to say thank you, because we won't get a chance to say that until after November 11th.
And then also, Shanley, I just thought if Jane could highlight a little bit. This year, at the Iowa School Board Association, our district is going to highlight a program that we implemented and did, and we're going to share it with all the other districts. And I think it's pretty exciting that we, we have the opportunity to do this, and we're going to share what we have done with other districts.
Yeah, absolutely. And I was, I will share even more at our next board meeting, because I think it'll be fun to talk about what the response was from the people who attended our session. So actually, Sue Flynn and I are going to present on the, the pay-for-performance metrics that we use in our district for the superintendent and for district administrators. And so the, the concept And so the, the concept is really, if, if you looked when the board renewed my contract, um, it was done in a different way. There is no guaranteed raise. Um, it's, it's very different. And so everything comes, every, um, every piece of raise or everything comes from performance metrics that are measured. And so you, um, it's, it's a, it's a great concept, and there are certain things that we track and we watch. And we look at that. It is, uh, it fits right in my style, because I'm a numbers, uh, junkie. And so I like to watch that and see, um, how, how we do and how we, when we perform well, it's, it's a great thing for all of our students. So, um, we'll be sharing more about that, and I'll, I'll kind of give you some comments at the next meeting to tell you how it was received.
Great. Anything further? All right. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second? All those in favor say aye. Chair votes aye. We are adjourned.